Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission for Monday, July 24th, and call the meeting to order. Commissioners, thank you for being here this evening. Thank you to all of our guests here joining us at City Hall, and staff, thank you as well. The first item is to adopt the agenda. Commissioners.
So move to Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the July 10th Planning Commission meeting. You have those in front of you. Staff or Commissioners, any changes?
Just one from the Chair.
Commissioner Benke.
Under number 10 adjournment, I wasn't here to signify. Aye.
Duly noted. Anything else from anyone else?
No changes from staff.
No changes from staff. Oh, I keep forgetting the staff. That's why you're looking mysterious over there. Sorry. I would entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Benke, seconded by Commissioner Braderick. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to item three, which is a public hearing of the application of Mosaic Crop Nutrition LLC for preliminary and final plat of a one-lot industrial subdivision of Cargill East in variance for existing structures and CUP to allow work within the Minnesota River floodplain and shoreline to upgrade the existing levee at 3860 Cliff Road West. And Ms. Garros, you'll be presenting.
Thank you, Commissioners. This evening, we do have a three-pronged application, if you will. It is a public hearing, and the applicant is here if you are interested to have questions. What we're looking at is in Burnsville, the very westerly part of the city, north of Highway 13 and west of the landfill, is forty acre, about forty acres of land in four different parcels that have been owned by Cargill since the early 2000s. And Cargill purchased the property in order to provide a buffer between the landfill operations and their property, which, the majority of which, is in the city of Savage. This overhead gives you an idea of the Cargill site, and the area in light yellow is that part that's in the city of Burnsville. Everything to the west of that is located in the city of Savage. For this application, the applicant is working with the city of Savage on the same level, if you will. They're applying for conditional use permits from the city of Savage as well. For the city of Burnsville, we have a relatively small part of the overall site, and in order for them to build the levee, to construct it to meet FEMA requirements for certification, they do need to do some grading and filling within the city of Burnsville, and there are some existing buildings, so that's why we're processing the variance. And the plat is needed because without it, there would be no access to the property. So we're doing a plat as well. Mosaic is really the generator for the applications. They've got a warehouse facility that was taken down, and they need to rebuild it. They're in the process of working with FEMA to update maps, floodplain maps, for the city of Savage and actually Scott County. In Burnsville, we updated our maps, and Dakota Counties was updated back in 2011. So there is a map amendment process through FEMA that is involved with this whole thing as well. Basically, what they would like to do is to reconstruct that building. In order to reconstruct that, they either need to floodproof it to meet the flood requirements, or the alternative, which is what they've chosen to do, is to make changes to the existing levee and to get it certified, so that the levee itself will provide the flood protection for the site. This map is a proposed FEMA, it's called a firm map, and this is what the FEMA insurance industry bases documentation on. You can see on the right-hand side, there is the distinction between the city of Burnsville and the city of Savage. On this particular graphic, the reason I show this is because I think it gives a good overview of the very small part of the levee, which is identified in red, that is within the city of Burnsville. So we're dealing with a very small part of the overall subject site. And you can see on here, the existing structures are identified in yellow, and we do have a couple that encroach over the common boundary between the city of Savage and the city of Burnsville. And those are what we will be talking about the variance for in a couple minutes. We did provide the grading plan, or excuse me, the overall topography plan, and on this view, actually, the top or north is to the left-hand side. To give an idea of what is occurring, the existing levee has been in place for many, many years. There are sections of it that need to have trees removed and other things because the trees are not conducive to keeping a levee in place and to maintaining the structure. Within the city of Burnsville, they're talking about, for the existing levee, basically modifying in places, either adding three to four feet of fill in some places, or taking three to four feet of fill off in other locations. So it's very minor change. On the down slope, if you will, that part of the levee is within the floodplain of the Minnesota River. So they do need a conditional use permit for the excavation and grading that will be taking place in that location. The same is true for the city of Savage. So what this does is this shows you, the dark line is the existing levee, for an example, and then the pink line shows at different locations within Burnsville, the modifications that they're doing. And the top one, I think, is probably most descriptive. In order to enhance the levee and enforce it, they're really looking at making the inside slope, if you will, a little bit more steep, and then adding to the outside. And then the river or the floodplain is out in this area. Everything within the city of Savage and that little bit within Burnsville is protected then inside of the floodbend. This is a blow-up of the small area of the levee and the mosaic site that is within the city of Burnsville. The red line represents the corporate boundary between the two cities. And you can see, there's a small section, again, small sections of these buildings and other structures that actually are within the city of Burnsville or encroach over the common lot line. The applicant is proposing a preliminary and final plat. Planning Commission is responsible for reviewing the preliminary plat. Again, for this, the top or the north is on the left-hand side of the page. We've got the existing landfill. The landfill is already, has got its own FEMA-certified levee to protect the landfill. The applicant did look at the possibility of taking this levee and connecting it to the landfill's levee, but you had, there are wetlands in this area, and there would have been wetland impacts, so that was determined to not be the best route to go. The applicant did file a wetland delineation report that's been reviewed by the wetland folks and the technical evaluation panel. There are no proposed impacts to wetlands at all within the project site, as far as the city of Burnsville is concerned, so that turns out to be a positive thing. On the very south part of the project site, this is where the city of Burnsville requested a dedication of right-of-way, and this will allow for, basically, the westerly extension of Cliff Road from the landfill site ultimately over to the boundary with the city of Savage. Burnsville's comprehensive plan calls for this road connection to take place at some point in the future. At this point, we're requesting the dedication and the easement, but not the, the actual construction of the, the road is not proposed at this time. That would take place at some future date when there's another road and trail connection, if you will, within the city of Savage. This is the northerly part of the site. That is, again, that part within Burnsville, which basically is bisected. You can see here, part of the Burnsville site is completely isolated, and then we've got, this is the existing harbor that they take deliveries to, and then the easterly part of the site that's within Burnsville as well. Final plat makes it a little bit easier to, to see what's happening. So we're basically taking four separate meets-and-bones parcels, plating them into one lot. The one lot is approximately forty acres. The width of the lot is 300 feet, which far exceeds the gateway industrial heavy zoning, or excuse me, the gateway, sorry, gateway industrial heavy is to the south. This would be actually a general industrial zoned property, and a minimum lot size for that is 40,000 square feet with 100 feet of lot width. So they far exceed that. They don't anticipate any further development of the site. There probably won't be much development just because of the, the low-lying areas where there are wetlands and woodlands, and it was never really purchased to be a development site, per se, but more to provide as a buffer between what occurs on the landfill property and what occurs at the Cargill site. This graphic gives you an aerial photo, and the reason that I wanted to show it, again, is to give you an idea. We're looking at the city boundary line at this location. Mosaic itself, they have the property within this part of the site. So Cargill basically owns this property, and then they own the land within the city of Burnsville. Mosaic, where their project is taking place, is within this location. And then, as part of the overall site, this is not all Cargill. There is another small portion that is owned by another entity as well. The reason that I had showed that is just to see that the entire site is wooded. They will be taking some trees down. The area that is identified in blue is the area where the trees will be removed. Again, this is needed to make sure that the levee is constructed to meet FEMA requirements. What we will do, this is similar to what we do for Excel, Center Point, and some of the larger landowners within the city, is they have provided us a tree removal inventory, so we know that the value and the number of trees that are proposed to be removed, that will stay on file for this site, and if there's any future tree removals, this will be added to that. And at such point, they get to 60% tree removal for the entire site, then our threshold would be met. With that, the variance that we had indicated really is for two things. It's, one, to memorialize that there is an encroachment over the common lot line, so technically, they're at a zero setback, and they don't meet our setback requirements because it crosses a line. In addition to that, we have a building perimeter landscape requirement, and with this site, with the majority of the buildings being in the city of Savage, it does not really appropriate, in the opinion of staff, that we add that requirement to just a small corner of this site. We are recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the excavation work in the floodplain. We're recommending approval of the variances, and also to the preliminary plat. We're requesting or identifying that there should be some conditions added to that, and that would be, number one, is related to the plat. In the future, should they decide to develop the property, build additional buildings, those types of things, at that point in time, the park dedication and stormwater management fees associated with plating would become, would be required at the rate in the future. And this is very comparable to what we've done in, in other sites as well. At the time of building permit is really where it makes sense to apply these, these requirements. Number two, the plat does need to have some minor modifications to meet specifications from the city engineer and the subdivision ordinance. These are really related to minor changes in, like, distances and some of those types of things. And there were a few of those. The city engineer just recommended that we add the condition that the plat needs to be modified to meet those, to meet those conditions, and the applicant has been advised what those specific changes are that are needed. Number three is that a FEMA no-rise certificate will need to be provided, and what this does is basically indicates that the filling that they're doing for the levee, any part of the work, that there is not going to be a rise in the flood elevation of the river. This is very common. We've done this for Excel. We did it for US Salt. Very common standard. Number four is also related to floodplain, and that is, we do want them to provide certification that their floodproofing techniques, there are some culverts that are associated with the development. They're existing. A couple of them need to be either replaced or enhanced. So we do want documentation that those have been done in a way that meets FEMA's requirements. Number five, again, very standard condition, that as constructed plans be provided to the city after completion of the, the levee project itself. And number six, that a tree removal permit will need to be obtained prior to removal of trees for the work within the city of Burnsville. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Benke.
Deb, regarding the plat, can you just briefly sort of hit the benefits to the city, going from torrent-stabbed strap property, the meets-and-bones to the plat? I mean, the city benefits from that because?
It's a city policy, actually, that when you need a land use approval, you need to plat. The reason that this is a benefit to the city is it because it provides us the right-of-way that we need for that road connection. Also, basically, what it does is it takes these very long legal descriptions for each unplatted piece, and it basically combines everything into Lot 1, Block 1 of Cargill East Edition. So it makes tracking of the title over the years and any type of permitting, et cetera, is much more simple when we're dealing with that platted description as opposed to the meets-and-bones description.
Yeah, I heard you mention the, the access in the 124th Street, the road at piece was the access you were talking about.
Yes.
Okay. And I think the only other thing was the issue of the trees, and I think, again, just to let everybody know about the, how the city looks at the trees, it looks like that cottonwood, elm, green ash, box elder, buckthorn, I mean, all the trees listed here are not desirable, but they still have value. Is that true?
Yes, they do. Yes. Any tree that is over four and a half inches in diameter at about five feet, or taller than six feet, if it's an evergreen tree, has a value placed on it. Of course, the value of willows, box elder, those types of things is much less than it would be if it were hardwood, like an oak or a maple or something of that sort.
Very good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Singh.
Ms. Garros, what Mosaic is trying to do here is to get FEMA certification.
Correct.
And probably that would require some improvement on the site.
Yes.
This project, recommended by staff, does it have any negative impact on the surrounding areas in the Burnsville part of the project?
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Along with the application, as I stated, they did do a wetland delineation report. They're totally staying out of wetlands. In addition to that, with the documentation they need to provide to FEMA, that included also a review of archaeological features, natural habitats, all of those types of things. No impacts anticipated. This is really taking the existing levee and adding fill where it's needed to make it stable to meet the requirements of FEMA. So very little impact to the city.
That's the, that's the improvement that I'm talking about.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garros. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Mr. Benke.
Ms. Garros, basically, the, the levee that's there and the levee on the waste management site basically create a, a small area here that can flood, and that's really not changing. It's just that the levee on the site is going to function for the site.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any more questions? Seeing none, is the applicant here, they'd like to, do we have any questions for the applicant? If you'd like to, if you'd like to make comments, you can. If not, there's no, no obligation to it. Okay. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing here at 6:50 PM. If anyone would like to speak to this item, feel free to come up to the podium and say your name and address for the, for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:50 PM. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I think this is, this project provides some improvement for that area. That's the, between area near to, where this project is being done. I think it will help the city, number one, with the plating, and since it creates no harm to the neighboring area, I think I would support the application.
Anyone else? Commissioner Benke.
Chair, would you stand for a motion?
I would stand for a motion.
Chair, I would offer that Planning Commission should recommend a city council approval of the variance to memorialize the nonperforming setback, building perimeter landscaping, the CUP allowing for the improvement of the levee, and the approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the following six conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. When does this go to the city council?
The item will be, on the city council, I believe it's August 8th.
August 8th.
Because next Monday is a, fifth Monday of the month, and the council meets the first Tuesday after the first Monday.
Be the first Tuesday.
It will be the eighth.
It's taken me years to figure that out.
You knew that very easily. All right. Thank you very much. That moves us on to item four, a public hearing for the application of Eden Baptist Church for a planned unit development amendment to build a 4,000-square-foot pavilion located at 1313 Highway 13 East. Ms. Dean.
Good evening, vice-chair, chair for tonight, members of the commission. This is a planned unit development amendment, like you stated, specifically, again, for Eden Baptist Church. The particular location is south of Highway 13, north of 122nd Street East. I'm actually going to zoom to the aerial photo to give you a better perspective. This is 12th Avenue South to the west. The particular site is surrounded by B3 PUD, which is a business zoning district to the east and to the west. And to the south, we have R3A, which is a higher-density residential zoning district. And then to the north, you have Highway 13, multiple lanes of traffic there, and then beyond that, you have business as well. The particular site is Zone B3 PUD. We do allow church within the, that zoning district. Back in 2002, the church purchased the property from the city, actually, and then in 2009, received approvals to plat the property, re-guide a portion of the property, re-zone a portion of the property, and build a phased development. The church building, it's existing, again, a phased approach was taken, and it's approximately 16,500 square feet, located on the west portion of the property. The site's well-served by existing parking. In fact, they have leased or offered their parking to others within the area for, for parking in the past. The area to the east of the parking lot is currently used as field space, activity area for the church. There's currently a easement on the east side of the property, a power line easement, as well as a built stormwater pond on the north part of the property, which handles any stormwater runoff. I should also point out, this is in what we call our drinking water overlay, our protection area. So it is one of the parcels within that. They do have adequate stormwater management to, to handle that and the proposed, the existing use and the proposed use. It's not, I would say, invasive to groundwater. It, there are clean uses, what are proposed, or a clean use. What is actually proposed is a picnic shelter, approximately 4,000 square feet within the open space area. open space area. There's also a storage shed that's proposed, 20 by 20 square foot, about the size of a single-family garage, to give you some perspective on that storage shed. The reason why a planning and development request is before you tonight, we have a specific provision within our code that talks about open space and green space that's envisioned for a planned unit development. And so, when you modify that, that's the trigger for the PUD in front of you. So the proposal meets all of our setback requirements, height requirements, building, construction material requirements. However, that open spa, the removal of that green space or open space was the trigger for it to be in front of you tonight. This is a rendering example of what the, the shelter, the pavilion will look like. Again, about 4,000 square feet. It's intended that that storage garage or storage shed next to the structure would house picnic tables, barbecues, equipment related to activities within that adjacent shelter. So this would only be used for church activities. For example, maybe eating a breakfast after, or lunch after a church service, perhaps graduations, reunions could be rented out in the future, possibly to, like, a small wedding reception for someone who's, you know, married in the church itself. The church is not intending to have any church services outside. All church services would be inside the building. Staff, again, I thought I was on a different slide. Excuse me. So there are some PUD benefits. Whenever there's a planning and development request, we always look at what are the benefits to the city. Eden Baptist serves Burnsville, and this is an extension of their, really their existing services that they provide to our community. It will become an amenity to the church. And although a portion of that green space is removed from the site, the site still well exceeds our green space requirements. They're not changing any portion of the existing facility, not, they're not proposing to change any building perimeter landscaping. It will just become, again, just an added amenity to the site. Staff does recommend approval of the planned unit development. We do want to make sure that any of the previously approved conditions are still in place, full force and effect. We do have an added condition. We did not receive plans associated with that 20 by 20 storage shed. We would like to make sure that that's compatible with the materials that are on the existing church building. And so, we ask that they're complementary, and that those would be provided at time of building permit. Certainly, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. We do have the applicant in the audience if you have any questions.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Banky.
Ms. Dean, how would outside services be handled differently if that was something that they chose to use this facility for?
You know, they, they certainly could. I think the concern when we had initial discussions would be noise, the potential for bringing in music and associated with activities. So if they were to do that, if they were to bring in, let's say, amplified music, it would be treated under our noise ordinance.
Similar, we just saw with buckthorn and that kind of thing.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I guess I was curious, because I know of other religious institutions that have outside services, and I wasn't aware that there was a lot of review of that.
If there were complaints associated with amplification of, you know, music or noise associated with the proposal, that's something that we would certainly, could certainly evaluate.
Okay, and then, is the city aware of a, of a master plan? It, it sounds like one's sort of referred to here in regard to their, their original application for the original church and its phased construction. So is there, is there a master plan that, that is in place that they're following?
It's my understanding that the entire build-out had occurred. It was a, in 2009, actually before that, they were in a different city, I think Savage, perhaps. And they, I believe, moved into the building. Once they had enough money, they were able to expand the building. And, and so they're at that 16,500 square feet that was part of that 2009 approval. Certainly, if they wanted to expand further into that green space, that's something that would have to come back before you as a planned unit development amendment.
Sure, but there's nothing currently planned for that green space?
Not that I'm aware of. The applicant is here to answer any further questions.
And then, do they offer any comment on the storage facility in terms of plans for that? I mean, they're just not here, or?
I have not received anything. I haven't received any specific concerns, but again, the applicant, I think, can answer that further.
Thank you, Chair. Any more questions for Ms. Dean? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward? We've got a couple of questions here. Please state your name and, and address for the record.
Yes. My name is Rocky Ranch. I'm elder at Eden Baptist, and I head up the committee for this. And my address is 18901 Jordan Trail, Lakeville, Minnesota. Of course, I'm representing the church here in Burnsville. So I guess, I wasn't aware that we needed the plans for the shed, and we certainly will be forthcoming with that. So maybe an overlook on my part, I'm not really sure. But we, we didn't have, we don't have any plans, per se, but we can put those together and provide those. So if that answers your question a little bit. And then, as far as the services outside, preconservative church, if you've ever visited us, we don't really amplify it up inside. And so there's no desire to do that outside. And I know that can change over time and stuff, but the intention is, is we have church picnics, we have three of them each summer, and right now, we sort of go to other facilities because there's no shelter, and we have this beautiful field that we just can't use, so we want to utilize it for that. As well, we have National Night Out at our church, which we're planning here very shortly, and we do VBS, and this will be a great asset for us as we reach out to the community and, and build relationships with the nearby neighbors.
Thank you. Commissioners, any more questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you very much. This is a, a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing at 7:03 PM. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak, feel free to come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any more comments, or I would certainly entertain a motion?
Chair, I would be willing to make a motion.
Commissioner Bradrick.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the city councils for the planned unit development amendment, with the two, the two conditions stated in our background.
Your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. Any more discussion?
Sure.
Commissioner, thank you.
I just, I'm struggling with it mainly because I think it's a beautiful church building, and I'm finding the, just a little, I'm finding the structure underwhelming personally. I, I really think that, you know, because it's on Highway 13, it's very visible, that it, and because it is a PUD, that typically is, is an opportunity for us to offer an opinion in terms of design. And in this case, I think it's weak, personally. And as a design professional, I guess that, if somebody needed to understand what that meant, I'd be happy to explain, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional comments? If not, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Love the use, but the vote was for design.
Four to one. Thank you very much. That goes before the city council on the, on August 8 as well, right? Got that down. All right. I think that moves us to item five, which is updates. Staff, any updates?
We just have the agenda for the next meeting. Handout.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioners, any updates from any of you? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.